This is the Diamond Regional School Committee meeting for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. The roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yeah.
Mr. Beegan? Mr. DiBiase?
Yeah.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel's?
Yeah.
Ms. Menard?
Yeah.
We have a call. In accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting. A member of the public who wishes to report the meeting must first notify the chair and must comply with the reasonable requirements regarding audio or video equipment established by the chair in not interfering with the meeting. Anybody here?
Mr. Matos is recording, yes.
Okay. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and just one.
All right. One point three need approval for the November seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
So.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. And chair state.
Make a mutation on the record.
Welcome. What point for student report?
She, our student representative had a family event that she needed to attend. We met and she went over her report. She put a list of current events that the students have been participating in as well as that beam signing. She made mention of the overcrowding that we had in the morning with opening the gym intramurals has helped with that situation. And at the last school committee meeting, she brought up concerns about students with the lunch program in cafeteria. So we did meet and we discussed the possibility of creating a student survey, student interest survey. I don't want to rain on her. I mean, it was phenomenal. She got close to a thousand responses. So, and I want her to talk a little bit more about that the next meeting, but I can tell you our next steps are. As we're going to analyze that data together, we're going to meet with our culinary instructor as well as cafeteria manager to look at some potential solutions to based on what the kids have selected.
Very good.
And then it's also a copy of the survey that she created. We talked about nutrition guidelines and impressively, she went to other local high schools cafeteria menus to compare and to pull some different selections that they offer that we don't.
Very good. Thank you. And do we have anybody signed up as citizens?
We do not.
Point one unfinished business. Big point one other matters, the MSBA school building committee report. Mr. DiBiase?
We have representatives from Suffolk and Colly's here. And then the GMP as well give us an update on the project table which I decided. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we do the school building committee first, please?
Tell me your agenda.
That's the precise.
I apologize. So as you see in your packet, we have the, we had to make a change from to add Leslie on to remember Andrew. So I just, if you'd like to take a look at it, I just need, do you have a vote to approve the new?
Need a motion to approve? Revision of the school building committee as submitted. Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote.
I apologize. No, thank you. So Mateo from Suffolk. Oh, there you are. You jumped out the big table. I got you. Yeah, so in terms of the GMP, as you know, we have now submitted our final GMP. This is really just a repeat of what we've done six times prior, but now culmination, this is the final all encompassing GMP. It's really a phenomenal one in that we were able to get to that original budget while also including the three alternates that at the time that we were originally making our budget, we weren't sure, right? But we had that story building. We have the field house and those bleachers, and then we also have the fields retained and the turf that was desired. So all of that for the two hundred forty million, seven two seven four four three. To just, we apologize. Yeah. You just maybe just tell everybody with GMP.
Yes.
Because long as the planning just got here, just so he knows it's the end result of.
Correct.
And yeah, so.
What do you probably think GMP is?
GMP stands for guaranteed maximum price. So we've gone through this process a few times in that as we were procuring the project or phase for some of the kind of intermediate steps, we had done interim GMPs. So we've done that six times prior to this, we've procured ninety percent of the project already. This is really just wrapping up those final ones. You know, some of the larger remaining scopes like demo abatement, landscaping. But this is again, just kind of culmination of those intermediate steps to this point. But happy to answer any questions. I know you folks have received the actual package. Again, most of this is really just putting together the stuff that's already been procured. I apologize, Greg, Greg Drayton from Castleblues, just got here and he had a whole presentation, but unfortunately he is stuck in traffic at twenty-four and he's not having a make it. So he had a presentation for us, but. And some of us, we already went through it at the building committee this week, but this is something that had to be done when you get within thirty, thirty, thirty percent though.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. And it's a requirement from the MSBA to get this GMP in order.
Right.
So. Yeah, and as a result of that, so there are some subcontractors and scopes of work that we've not bought out yet. So we've kept them as holds in this, right? So those larger demo abatement, landscaping, some of these other ones, they will appear in the package as holds. Those are representative of subcontractor value that we perceive, not gone through that de-scope process. We bring in all the subs, compare them, make sure it's apples to apples, but we feel comfortable enough at this stage to be able to kind of take that risk on, knowing that some of those numbers might move a little bit, but ultimately fill this fall. And right, and as a result, we hit exactly to the number of the ninety percent and we did that by kind of levering our construction contingency, right? So guys have an owner construction contingency and then Suffolk has a construction contingency. We reduced that by eight hundred thousand to get to that number. So I know it's very intentional about trying to get to that ninety percent that we presented. Again, because we feared so much, we felt like it was still responsible to be able to reduce that contingency.
So this is a major milestone. You know, as Mateo mentioned, there were six interim GMPs. As you said, this kind of wraps everything together into a final contract. Tying to our milestone of steel and having beam sign and getting that ceremonial final piece of steel up. So two major milestones today, it is approved. It was reviewed by the mobility committee. They voted to recommend approval to this group. So they had some questions, went back and forth, and we've been working on this for a very long time, but we're able to kind of beat our marks of our budget and our schedule and everything is aligned at this point. Any, any questions? Say nothing. I need a motion to approve the GMP as submitted. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote. Our project update.
I give it a bunch of.
Would like to do that.
So we are right in the midst of rough start and we are seeing this one, which is the east side of our project. We are ready to perform, which is great. Hoping to get that on soon, so we can avoid some of this wet weather that we've seen. But the carpentry trades are in there, starting to build the actual walls. Ruffs are starting, which means that our mechanical, like electrical plumbing trades are in there, so they're running pipe. They're putting up duct for the HBC system, starting to get fire protection sprinklers up in some of the more undeveloped parts of site where we're still doing steel. We're finishing up, as Tim mentioned today, we are ceremony beam signing. We'll place that. Be done with steel at the end of January and then we'll start to move on to more roughs of the other sequences. And hopefully we start to get closed up in early spring. Really good stuff happening. Our trade partners have been excellent. We are on schedule, on budget, GMP, so fantastic. Any questions? Or all three sequence two. So there, the building's broken up into five sequences. One through three are those larger classroom wings that are closer to us. So that's really the majority of the spaces and then four and five are in the back, those are the shop spaces on the motor. So we are, I don't know, I guess I'd say we're at sixty percent.
For concrete?
Yeah. Terms is left.
Yeah, probably.
Obviously fully complete with foundations, but. If you're, if steel, you're open to be late in January. So we're, we're erecting now into a sequence three and again, sequence four and five being just those one story spaces. It's very fast. So those will be very quick.
Very good. Moving on to, so in this community expansions, we have a total statement from Calers for one hundred forty-four thousand five eighty-eight point eight three. We have a member statement from Calers of one thirty-one nine seven eight point six six. KPA, a member statement of one fifteen eight six four point two five. Application fourteen of Suffolk, five million four hundred thirty thousand seven sixty-seven point eight nine. Okay. Recommendation is to approve the MSBA front expenses as submitted. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote. All right, moving on to three point one D, personnel, this is the.
Yes, see before your list of, you see a list of individuals that have been appointed to various positions. Both of these have long-term situations, although you do see some ice hockey in there and you do see it as a snow's happened this year, not on the budget, but it's out of the grid. For the community engaged specialists, who is working closely with the school in particular, this is what I said. Students, these students that have been appointed, they are, but those students who are suffering significant illnesses, they will tutor them on a weekly basis. We have resignations. One, Elaine Murray was an administrative assistant, she's the secretary that is out the window. And the other is a priori cafeteria worker, may have hoped.
Moving on to advisory board.
Sorry.
The advisory board, there are three before you. Cameron Bell, culinary arts, Mr. Bell's current student, culinary arts program, he's planning to attend both secondary school, the further his culinary education. His mother is Tina Bell, who I think you might know, her activities here. James Marsili, advanced manufacturing, he's a ninety-eight grad, machine two program. He's been in the trade his whole life, twenty-seven plus years of experience. He's the president of the shop that he started in two thousand eleven. And Manuel Silva, building and property maintenance, he's a graduate of BCC Business with a concentration in real estate and insurance. Mr. Silva has worked in construction twenty-five plus years, eighteen plus years in real estate and the owner, president of his own company. That being said, the recommendation is to appoint Cameron Bell, James Marsili, and Manuel Silva to the advisory board of the identified program for a term of three years.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. All right, moving on to C, student travel.
This travel request actually came for yourself, Mr. Chairman, on a phone call that I had with you for the volleyball coach. It was a student travel request for athletes to participate in the All-Star game, which was held November thirteenth at Bristol Playwood Technical High. And the recommendation is to reaffirm the approval of the student travel request.
Need a motion to approve?
It says you are reaffirming.
Yes, I know.
He did, but it has to go.
But it has to go before the full one.
So you made the motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote.
Thank you. The next is the advanced manufacturing program, this practice, they've submitted an out of state student travel request to visit tour Maxile in Warren, Rhode Island on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. The recommendation is to approve this out of state travel for the students in advanced manufacturing to tour in Warren, Rhode Island, Maxile on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
A motion to approve?
So.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote.
And the third travel request is pretty long range thinking. The senior class advisors have submitted an out of state travel request for students to attend the senior prom on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, Newport, Rhode Island, from five P M to eleven P M. The recommendation is to approve the out of state travel for the senior class advisors and their students to attend the senior prom, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, Newport, Rhode Island, five to eleven P M.
Need a motion to approve?
So.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote.
They're going to the Marriott this year and they've been there before. Last year they changed to a venue that really wasn't, it wasn't the best.
Okay.
Okay. Now, this is much more conducive to the students there with a lot more breathing space, a lot more air conditioning and a lot less. You are very welcome to, you're very welcome to attend and a lot less heat on the floor. Thank you for that.
I guess that'll depend on what song is playing. Oh, that's being reviewed as we speak.
All right, we have a request to establish scholarships.
Yes, so we have this request to establish the Dylan Quinn Community Fund, F U N, small day, submitted request to establish a five hundred dollar toolship in memory of Dylan Quinn. The family would like to award the scholarship annually to a student who exemplifies core values of a technical student and the dedication and drive DQ to show both as a craftsman and a friend. They have submitted on the following page or read the recommendation, they submitted a overview of what they would like this to do. So a student going into the workforce and with it demonstrating the qualities that you see here, teamwork, excellence, displaced creativity. Grades are not part of the criteria. It is a toolship as they're calling it, five hundred dollars and will be paid as a reimbursement once receipts are paid. And the D Q C F intends for the scholarship to be set to as, and you see the presentation there of who is part of this program. How we're going to honor that. So the recommendation is to establish the five hundred dollar scholarship in memory of Dylan Quinn for the criteria set forth by the family.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote.
The, the second one to establish a scholarship is the George Sneaker McDonald Committee. I think many people might have known Sneaker in the city of Fall River. Has submitted a request to establish the George Sneaker McDonald Scholarship and it will be a five hundred dollar scholarship awarded to three baseball players to purchase tools or pay for college fees. You may remember that our team, the Diamond, played Derby High School in a, on a game at Lafayette Park. Diamond won, to say. But they did take up a collection in order to erect the statue in a monument to Sneaker McDonald in Lafayette. These are the proceeds that came from that that were extra and in the spirit of good competition and just sportsmanship, they decided to award three scholarships to Diamond baseball players. I met with them and the scholarship just has to go to a baseball player, good student, someone going on either to trade or to college to receive five hundred dollars. So the recommendation is to establish that scholarship in memory of George Sneaker McDonald. Five hundred dollar scholarship to award to three baseball players to purchase tools or to pay for college fees.
Need a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. All right, go on to E, accepted the gifts.
Yes, now that I've read that about the establishment of that, this is now to accept the gifts of a fifteen hundred dollar donation that was made to the George Sneaker McDonald Scholarship. That would be the five hundred dollars for three baseball players and my recommendation is to accept the fifteen hundred dollar donation to fund that.
The motion to accept, so need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote.
The second is a, there's been a donation of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. It was made by Dr. Kyle Maderis and Dr. Philip Robitaille to cover the cost of renting a coach bus for students in the dental assisting program to attend dental conference in Austin. The recommendation is to accept that seventeen hundred and fifty dollar donation paid by the two doctors to cover the cost of renting a coach bus for students in the dental assisting program to attend dental conference in Austin coming up in the new year.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote. When the.
They usually get it February.
They'll have to come back to us for. What time is it during the day or?
It is, it's daytime, it's daytime event, they leave approximately, approximately money and they back mostly like three days, three, five.
Depending upon the Boston time. Four, five, five, nine, period. Okay, F, request to establish the student activities club.
Yes, although I'll read it here, I'll really turn some of this over to Mr. Kitchen, who was really instrumental and worked with the instructors. Mr. Kitchen, if you would.
It's a car club, Mr. Maderis and Susan. And all the tech ones, it's not a car club, it's all the students. The hope is that they can do kit car. Maybe raffle that off in the next year sometime. So the whole kind of, it'll be an after school program, the application, they have all twenty-five signatures already, but it's, any student can join. I'm excited about it. Portion of it may actually go into the curriculum itself a little bit throughout the day, so to the electric cars that we have. But primarily a lot of the work will be done at the school.
With the kit codes.
We have determined that right now, that's why I'm not going to worry about it until next year, maybe at the end of the year, we'll still need to build it. The kit itself is about twenty thousand, but then you have to worry about the engine, so we're working on that.
Do want to point out that the advisors are not going to receive a stipend for this as it's not the DTA contract. They wanted to do this. That's very exciting, but it's a collaboration.
Yeah, it's nice to have them working together.
Mr. Susan may be on actually.
Yes.
Mr. Susan, are you on?
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Susan.
Hi, Mr. Susan.
Oh, hi.
Do you have anything else to add regarding the, the car club that yourself and Mr. Maderis have put together?
No, just something that we would like to promote, obviously the automotive industry out there represent a little bit more with incoming freshmen, making a little bit of awareness.
But it's open for nine through twelve, any student.
Would be any student, any program, any student who wants to join, kind of see what car building is about and what we have to offer. And right now, we had a lot of interest with students just wanting programs and didn't get in. So this is something that we can kind of showcase what our trades are about, also collaborating with other programs, metal fab, advanced manufacturing, electronics, carpentry. Just different, different programs to get involved in something that I think is pretty cool, I guess, and a lot of talk with students too, so.
Awesome. Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Generate a lot of interest. So the recommendation is to establish a diamond auto customs club. Advisors will not receive a stipend as the club is not for DTA contract.
Need a motion to approve?
So.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote.
You do see him packing, that's his, he just allowed a request and on the back of that is, of all the names of the students, he said they are entering, so this is exciting.
Very good.
There's one, one quick question, because I'm hoping that the bag of all the same shop, did we put it out to metal fab and machine shop students, Mr. Susan?
Yes. What is it?
You know, it's all the same shop that's looking, but.
Yes, yeah, so that was, at first that was only interest between our program. We did have another ongoing list, I don't think it made it to, to you right now, but we did have our own auto collision students. It was more just interest at first, but I'm trying to open it up to everyone else going forward. There are other students interested. We did have some plumbing students actually that mentioned it. It was more, let's see if there's any interest and after the fact, there's a lot more now that we, we haven't presented, but there are a lot more students. So we're just trying to get a feel for it and see what we can offer and what we could come up with.
Are you doing a limit, do you have a student, do you have any except?
Again, we're trying to, we're trying to process everything first. I believe we're going to try to limit it based on first trial, so we'll limit to certain amount of students. We'll look at requests, we'll open it up to the whole school and then I don't know if we'll pick and choose an amount of student, but we're, we'll see what the interest is going to be schoolwide. We haven't done that yet.
So, so, Kevin, the, so if you get a good number of students, would it be advantageous to give it to the upperclassmen since the following year, if this program works? That the local, the freshman and sophomore, for example, would have the opportunity the following year. So probably advantageous to give it to the eleven, twelve grades if you have that many at first and then the following year, those others that signed up, would sign up again and get in that year. You know what I mean? Rather than taking freshman sophomore and telling somebody that's a junior, you know, might be good to get, let them get in before the freshman and sophomore, even though we love to see them all again.
I, I can see only one issue with something like that, because they haven't cut it off the floor yet. Then it's, it's, it's probably don't take them a year or two to build a car.
I think after the first of the year, once we return, we can have a club meeting, see how many kids are interested. At that point, you determine what direction. Classes, because if it's a senior, the car is actually going to be built next year, they won't be here.
Right, right. And then you have a lot of seniors that go off.
They're not going to be around.
Okay.
Great work in front of a great job.
Yes. It's a good start.
It is. Nice.
All right. Need a motion to approve the professional development.
Yes, you do, they're, I haven't read it yet.
No, okay.
But thank you for that. Professional development proposal, it's actually, Mrs. Blackis, since it's coming in, has noticed that there seems to be something that she would like to have the faculty administrative team to improve upon some of their skill sets. So I'll let, I'll let her explain exactly what this is.
Right, so part of working with this organization really streamlines our philosophy on how we support our students and especially our high needs workers. That would be our special education students, our quaver students and also multi-language learners to make sure that we are all on the same page, rolling in the same direction and calling out strong instructional practices to create a culture of high expectations in academics. So what we have, I met initially, I met with the admin team, we're aligning our already scheduled professional development days. For the most part, I think there's one that's going to overlap. But as you also know, our new, we need to create a new school improvement plan, the one expires this year. So this will frontline and will, the last session, which is part of the full day, is a full school professional development on looking at data to drive our decisions so that we can set active goals to work for the next student school.
So the recommendation is to approve the professional development plan proposal as submitted.
Need questions, comments before we move on? All right. Need a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote.
I flipped the page a little bit.
It's okay. I'm like a sound key, maybe you can move it.
All right, H, we have the monthly financial report, Mr. Kitchen.
One, one item is the site services that show negative nine thousand dollars on page two halfway down. That is due to the sixty-five thousand dollar encumbrance, so I'm not overly concerned about it at this time. See how late the encumbrance goes out. We can, we can, we can update some of that later. There is a larger encumbrance that we still have on the extraordinary maintenance, which is the line that we put our equipment that we're buying certified free cash. Build it there. certified free cash, we build it there, so that, that'll, that'll also. That is it.
Any questions on the, uh, school budget at this point? Moving on to, uh, expenditures.
Have, uh, the expenditures listed, let me have a, IXL, which is a math license, district-wide math software for eleven thousand eight seventy-three, seventy-six. There is, oh, pardon me, because it's the skills capital electronics, uh, equipment. The mix two for fourteen thousand two eighty-seven, fourteen thousand six nine four oh five. Human Solutions is the purchase of two larger photocopies, uh, faculty workrooms, the one that is above the library right now, we've had for about thirty months, and it has just over a billion copies on it. So the crank has grew with a lot of copies. But one of the vocational wing is about eight hundred tons, so I'm looking to replace them, I'd rather purchase them, because when we move into the other building, it's more of a line, you don't have to worry about the lease on it, and still pay for clicks with lots of flexibility and everything like that. How about consulting is, uh, presentation on professional development, forty-two thousand. Integrity is the data analytics platform, uh, which is software to track some of our software use. Data, that's thirty-one thousand, that will be available through, by grants also. Then you have Masdeca, uh, for their, for their competition from the, from the after-school program.
The recommendation is to approve the following expenditure. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aho. Transfer of funds, Mr. Kitchen?
I have one transfer, and it's been, uh, transfer of fund equipment, uh, the amount of seventy-seven thousand five hundred to technology, software, hardware, the same amount of seventy-seven thousand five hundred. That is your case, we don't take the expenditure, rather than grants, we will, uh, add a funding in those lines to support those two programs.
Recommendation is to approve the transfers. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aho. Okay, Katie, LBN, uh, subcommittee report. Mr. Beagan's side here.
Sure. The, uh, there were no votes taken inside that, uh, that was something to recommend out, it was a discussion, no, on the current situation with the program, which is mainly strong. Uh, it was good news listening to the recruitment of students coming in. There are already seventeen students who have been accepted into next year's full-time daytime program. Those are seventeen of our students that did not have access this year due to the fact that the program was suspended, uh, unfortunately, due to the teacher situation. Uh, recruitment was talked about, uh, there are, she mentions, Brogan mentioned, there are already a hundred and thirty applications coming in to try to fill those remaining twenty spots or so, the last thirteen spots, um, she firmly believes that it's going to be successful. Last was talking about one of the reports, which is the ASIN report, she has filled in, uh, about eighty percent of that, which will leave the incoming interim director, Mrs. Barbara Tera, filling the rest. The good news on that is that that, that sort of what isn't due until December of twenty-twenty-five. So actively we're looking for a new full-time director utilizing, uh, utilizing of social media, uh, in particular, but actively recruiting, advertising for a director we firmly believe was successful. Mr. Beagan thought that everything was moving well, and, uh, gave kudos to Mrs. Brogan for the work she has done, and wished her well compared to the career coming up, A.D. Bass. That was the report.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Need a second?
Mr. Chairman, the, um, we have one more here, uh, from the ring. Well, next year.
All right, moving on to the, uh, policy subcommittee report, Mr. Beagan.
This, uh, Dr. Warner, Steve, I thank you, and if you'd like to open the wellness and the, uh, the, uh, athletic study.
Good evening. So we have taken a peek at the wellness policy, specifically at the athletic study part of the wellness policy. Within that part of the policy, we have been looking at really clarifying the athletic study, so that it looks at having an MIA sport instead of just talking about a sport in general, adding in an injury mural. We opened it up for a little more flexibility, so that instead of, they all year long, students learn to participate in one sport, because we do have phys ed as a semester-based course here, so that aligns a little bit further. The stuff in the packet that is in red that you have there are some of the clarifications, and then we put down the qualifications as well. Students have to be in grade eleven or twelve to participate, and they do have to fill out their pre-approval paperwork as well. That's been included for you. It's not a part of the policy, but so that everybody is on the same page. And then if a student is unable to participate, we do have an option for them to be able to get that P E, because that is required by law. Right now, we do have, it's, that's only two students participating. We don't anticipate students participating in the athletic study instead of P E. Right now, we're not offering a study hall. We did include that language, give us flexibility in the future if we do have a study hall. But this really is intended more for students to be able to take a class in lieu of P E if they are an athlete participating in a sport. So our kiddos who say want to take an extra chemistry course, second science, things of that nature, and are also an athlete, and that's really how we're using it for students at this school.
Any other questions, discussion items?
Is this being modeled or been implemented in, in any other school districts?
Um, you know, I'm not positive which school district, but we do have, um, clarification from the state that it is allowed, along with the coast, that it is allowed. We didn't get certification from the state.
School that I had coached at, uh, a couple of years back, they participated in this, or they will participate in this for years, and they still do.
Makes sense, makes sense.
That last comment. So there is a recommendation, uh, to approve policies ADF, wellness policy IHCPA, to implement as submitted.
Need a motion to approve, so? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aho.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, the second part of this is dual enrollment, and again, Dr. Warner has done a lot of work on that.
Um, and so this was really cleaning up that.
Warren, oh my God. Maybe I'm so used to calling you Katie.
We don't even know what you're talking about. It's okay, um, but we cleaned that up as well, um, and you have a copy of the paperwork again. The additional paperwork is the practice part of it, because we're already on the same page, but the stuff in red here is the cleaning up part of it. Really looking at, um, saying qualifications for it, or to have the necessary college requirements, just to get good standing, completing the free approval paperwork, and, um, students having to submit their official transcripts. We did add in what the grade scale is gonna be, because that question has come up in the past, and then we removed the classes that were listed, because the classes, really, we found limited students, whereas we have students that wanted to take a ride in courses that we were able to match up. We spoke about in subcommittee was, for example, a student might want to take an encapsulation course that matched up well, so they are, well, great. Without listing a specific course, or with a listing of a specific course, that made it so a student couldn't take a separate course if it wasn't on there, and we didn't want to, um, deny students opportunities to access.
I just wanted to ask you, um, given that it's free tuition at the community colleges now, if the, if the students, I think encouraging students to go to the community college, would that be free for them?
Unfortunately, the free community colleges for our high school graduates, um, we do have some opportunities here through, say, the Charleston Foundation, um, the funding mechanisms have changed. The state does have some grants out through early college of things that the school could continue to look through and look at, but, um, the fundamental mechanism on the high school level is a little bit different than it was in the past, but the free community college that we see advertised in the paper is for our high school graduates.
Well, you know what, maybe we should talk about that, because I think we could perhaps encourage, uh, them to, maybe something they didn't think about.
Yeah, absolutely.
These kids would be, I mean, it makes sense, if you're giving free community college to graduates of, of, of high schools, then having kids in high school taking a course, it should be free. So, let's talk about it, and, you know, we'll talk to the senator and, and, uh, and, you know, the state reps and say, okay, let's do it.
I'm up for that.
I'll file the bill.
Uh, one thing I do want to add is with the, the, the state does offer what they call designated pathways programs, this, to take free, well, not free, but grant-funded dual enrollment. However, vocational schools, the reimbursement rate is, the money that they do give is similar to the funding that we do get already for CTE students. So it's no added bonus to us.
Well, what, what, I mean, just think about it, well, doesn't it just make sense if you're giving free tuition to kids that just graduated from high school? Why not give free tuition to kids that are in high school?
That want to do it sooner.
So, uh, it might be something they didn't think about, and, you know, let's talk about it.
That'd be wonderful, thank you.
Now, we had just talked with BCC at this time, UMass.
We had a partnership with, or we've had a partnership with UMass in the past, and when, um, dual enrollment funding worked a little bit different, we did have about thirty seats there. The transportation for some of our students is a little difficult to UMass, it's a little bit further away. With online classes, it becomes a little bit easier now, and many of our students do participate through an online or hybrid format. So I would love to see some courses like that, and we have contracted courses in the past as well, so for example, when we use the Charleston foundation funds, and we purchase the English one oh one or one oh two, that we open up the extra seats that we have for students to be able to take those courses, and then they get the transcript and credits if we have additional seats in those classes. So there are a few different pathways that we can go through for class, uh, for courses outside of the C C as well.
Um, I think, right now, I'd, I'd like to concentrate on the community college, because it's a little more difficult with the university to, right, it's, uh, given that we're doing free tuition.
Yeah, there is a criteria, it's not just free for everybody, they have to fit that criteria.
Yes, yes, but, yes, you're trying to graduate, yes, but, but thinking about, if, if the kids in high school are willing to take classes, um, and they're not taking classes because we can't, they can't afford it, or we can't afford it, um, and let's talk, let's talk about it.
Yeah, B C C is gonna have a new president, so, so maybe that would be.
Oh, yeah, but it's, it's state, state, so.
But to enter into, it, it can be affordable if you enter into agreement.
Okay, yeah, okay, that'd be good, and we'll do that.
I mean, I, uh, Mr. Beagan has worked very hard over the years with this, he really went at it, some of his back, and I know he's worked with Katie on this so long, but, uh, it's phenomenal, because we got a lot of students doing this. I go through Jeff's kids, we graduate with twenty credits, you know, to go college, so. Yep, that, I'm sorry, this time I apologize, I don't think I, uh, there was, we took it separately, uh, and the recommendation would be to approve the wellness policy as described by Dr. Warren, uh, IHCPA, uh, concerning, uh, I'm sorry, the IHCPA to enrollment, uh, policy as submitted.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aho. Moving on to the house building program.
Again, uh, Storice, that's someone right there, um, is here, and, uh, we're totally.
You had to foredue the projects, uh, community project list, so I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but everything is going well. We have some that are on hold, because we're waiting for, uh, the town or the officials to get back with us, um, responding to some of our questions. And then we have others that are slated to start, uh, towards the spring, um, as building property will no longer be needed at the house building project. They'll be, will be freed up to move into the house, to shove some of the old, uh, building projects. Our playhouse is moving along, Rosemary Swish Kids, uh, it's already in progress, if anybody's ever in the building and wants to go down to the opera tree, uh, you can take a look at it, we are building for, uh, twin sisters, so, that's all I, that's all I can tell you about the project. On who and the what's.
And the, uh, nothing else on the projects, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, onto the, uh, house building program, um, or the one that's being built at this time. Myself and the chairman did go a couple weeks back and take a look, uh, we couldn't climb up there, but it's, uh, it's, uh, they have to jump right up there, it's, I think we need a ladder, but, uh, it's coming out awesome, and then, uh.
They're doing a great job.
Yeah.
They travel, have, um, windows, um, in before we leave for, um, Christmas break, and they'll be doing some work out there during the, um, Christmas break. That, you know, is in our agreement that they have to fulfill, so it's moving along.
Any questions? Anything else?
Twenty-five, twenty-six house building program. All right, so the twenty-five, twenty-six house building program, um, you have it in front of you, we already have one application, we'll have more of it, um, next time. We'll look at the schematic of it, um, but we are still advertising, and, uh, we talked about it at our meeting, and we probably would like to bring it back to this committee, uh, our meeting in February, to look at what we have and, make a note on it, so those people can get moving with their financing and builder and everything else, get the funding. You got that one?
No. It happens to be in the same location, same development that we're covering.
Swansea.
Swansea.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to, and superintendent director's report.
Very briefly, uh, very rare, because it's all written there in front of you, uh, beam signing took place this week on Monday, the student signed the beam. Due to Wednesday, didn't happen due to the weather, but we'll have a schedule today, Thursday, um, was the final ceremony, uh, on the ironworkers, both of the, and I think those people who made this all possible, uh, enrolled and took, uh, took eighteen minutes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to watch you now, for the crowd. Uh, the enrollment reports and the admission reports were very strong. It only shows us fourteen hundred seventy-two students, there is a breakdown for you by city, town, grade, uh, the admissions report, um, the, uh, just as of December ninth, it's seven hundred eighteen applications, uh, your reporters are gonna show you December thirty, because I had it out, then I updated it, and, uh, I mistake it, I included it. Cooperative education report is here too, it's broken down by potential seniors, uh, placed active seniors, uh, we are pretty strong here too, we have, we do have one hundred and seventy-two seniors enrolled, uh, as that number is fluctuating, uh, on the call out, and again, there's a report. Open house was held Sunday, December eighth, for one and three, it was very well attended, the public was still very interested in Diamond, um, and the LBN report, I had given out previously too. But, uh, we'll, we'll move on.
Any, uh, questions or comments for this? Thank you. Moving on to calendar events. Uh, next school committee meeting will be set for, uh, January the ninth. Any doubts you want to have, it's from the, uh, calendar? All right, we don't have anything that, uh, came in.
No.
Correspondents, as I said, the next meeting is set for January ninth. Uh, we have a reason to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, Susan, I see you're general of thirty-eight, section twenty-one, paragraph thirty, to discuss strategy in respect to collective litigation, the meeting. Now, the detrimental effect of the body of litigation, the sort of public body, and chair sort of declares, which we do, um, there is likely going to be no votes taken upon the assumption of the session.
Need a motion to go into executive session, so? Need a second? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Need a roll call?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan? Mr. Diviasus?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel's?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
And, uh, we will, uh, we will come back on the open session, but there will likely be no votes. Yep. All set?
All set.
Okay, we're back in open session. Need a roll call?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan? Mr. Diviasus?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Manuel's?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Need a second? All in favor? Aye.